Ryanne Sullivan, Co-Chair GBOS and Fire Department Supervisor.
Jennifer Wingard, GBOS Co-Chair and LUC Supervisor.
Kyle Wade, GBOS Cemetery and Parks and Rec Supervisor.
Kevin McDermott, Land Use Chair.
And you got Mike Edgington online.
Hi, Mike Edgington, Housing and Economic Development Supervisor.
And I don't know if Amanda is there a second? I don't see Amanda Sassy yet.
Okay, so nobody else?
Thank you. Sit.
Can I repeat the first two names again because that's the only one that I did.
Oh, sure.
Brian Edgington.
Joel Ribbons.
Okay, we're gonna jump right into the presentation tonight, but prior to that, I want to say that the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public. And keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everybody's opinions and it'll also help this crowded to not have side conversation. Right, so as we jump in, let's approve the agenda or I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve today's agenda as presented.
Mike, you have a second?
Okay, do we have any discussions about that? I'm gonna do this by consent unless there are any objections to approving the agenda. Okay. All right, well, jumping right in, I would like the, we have a overview of the project that is being proposed. And if you could, if the presenters could introduce themselves and.
Yes, thank you. My name is Tim Tredwell. I'm Vice President of Glacier Valley Lodge. I'm here with me Tredwell and John Faulkner. We're also partners on the project. And I'll start just by, and Andrew Faulkner's online. Thank you, Andrew Faulkner's online. He's the president of this project and I'll start by going over what we proposed to the state of Alaska in our application. Those were an 11 acre lease site on the northeast side of the taxiway at the airport. And proposed plan is for 150 room fly-in, fly-out lodge for the ancillary facility for winter sports. And I brought a small printout of what our lease site would look like. The bottom block is eight and a half acres. And the top block is two and a half acres. We can pass this around to afterwards. But I just wanted to say thank you for having us through all these meetings and thank you for scheduling us at this meeting. And we wanted to start by going over some findings in support of this project that we've come up with. And this is all based on prior conversations, conversations we've had with, with Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Their recommendations for what needs to be seen on this project for it to happen correctly. And just a few, a few of the findings, we realized that from the beginning, Mount Hood Drive has acted as the primary FAA and DOT approved access for. From large conversations, we've seen the community has an interest in expanding airport-related development. We feel that that's the case after talking to you in these last few meetings, if done correctly. And we also feel that long-term, the airport may benefit from alternative access routes. In the short-term, Mount Hood presents a least disruptive and least environmentally impactful, no, to all other known options. There are other possibilities for accessing the airport, but right now that is the known access route. And we feel that there could be improvements to that if this lease is granted. The benefits we found are for both aviation and non-aviation uses. They will bring benefits to the Girdwood community, including 50 to 70 year-round jobs, tax revenues, support for aviation users, and growth of outdoor recreation. We realize that the impacts of the development will be mitigated by substantial regulatory review by multiple jurisdictions, including Girdwood Board of Supervisors. And we're willing to work with you throughout the development period, throughout the building permit period, see it this time correctly. The proposed development would also potentially help address many needs at Girdwood Airport, we feel. Such as addressing the inadequate access road to Mount Hood, extending the airport taxiway, extending utility services. And Girdwood pilots have expressed a need for additional tie-down spaces and fuel cells. And we will plan to bring that along with development. We're a reliable operator. Our team includes a hotel operator, the Faulkner family. And we are in the aviation community up here. And we bring superior lodging to the area, focus conservative Alaskans. So those are just a few sticking points that we wanted to present to the Land Use Committee in support of this project. And we do have a draft resolution that we can present to Girdwood Board of Supervisors. But our ask tonight is for the support of the project. There's still lots of hurdles that we need to get through. And with your support, we can start doing those hurdles. When we met with DOT after our last meeting, May 5th, or June 5th, rather, they told us we can't do any site plans. We can't do any drilling. We can't do anything until we get the lease. And all those things will help answer questions that you guys have. And with your support in obtaining the lease, we can start to answer those questions. Well, thank you for your time. And if John or Andrew or me would like to add anything.
No, that pretty well sums it up. I'm a lifelong Alaskan. I was born in Acre Ridge. My son was born in Homer. But we have long and strong roots in the Girdwood Valley. Many of you know that. We're committed to doing right, doing well, and creating lasting value. That's one of my principles as a human being. So we're proposing to not just build but operate long-term this facility. So that's my commitment to the Girdwood community. I think my sons as well. So that's pretty much concludes my remarks.
If I could take a moment or just talk about a few things about the site. As we discussed this with DOT, you know, where pretty much every issue that came up in previous publications. As you know, this very large anchor, the road that a fairly large side cut from the hill, there was drainage issues and so forth when that was built. And then you go to a long road toward the north end of the runway. If you have a hangar facility, these to be on the runway or accessible to runways, so the road could come behind them somehow. And ideally, we don't want to have to cut off with that inside head. So it may be a circumvent shape, the road behind the, behind the hangers. We looked at a couple of different options. That's where, that's one place we'd soil it. There to do a specific plan out front. Another issue is that once you have that, you've got the, the area that's inside the red circle or part of the red circle. Where we've got in mind 150-room lodge, up to 150 rooms. It doesn't have to be 150 rooms, but that's what's, that's what's implied there. Again, soils, hydrology, whether or not, whether or not you're using pilings or cut and fill with, with wetlands determinations. These are all up to, as I, as Tim said, we can't get on the property to do the soils work till we have a lease, till we're paying DOT the right to have that. So we can't exactly say what the science going to look like. We had almost several different shapes of a building that we've put in. They would have both the road access on the west side as well as the, you know, the access to look up at the Moose Meadow or look toward the mountain. Then we spout of there. And there's several different shapes the building could be. A lot of that is dependent on the soils work and the tree work that has to be done. So that's why we're not seeing a specific design today. As you know, we've got a spout of creek coming down. You've got a beaver pond. There is actually a, it'd be interesting. I've also seen trout rise to a line in that, in that low pond. It's kind of interesting. Obviously, we want to protect that watershed there. But the idea of where the dog lot used to be, or near where the dog lot used to be, having a recreation area. The people got access to get into the Moose Meadow and a place where people might be able to rent cross-country steeds or rent snow, rent snowshoes, which is a concept. There were several emails that have gone around that have talked about, gee, we didn't know how much the airport owned on Moose Meadow. And I think John can tell you, Andrew can tell you, their grandfather actually worked at Moose Meadow, what's heard. His name, and he, you're not interested in changing the character of Moose Meadow. I see there every year or something there. 10 or 20 years and the idea is to have something that is kind of less visible from the meadow, hidden in the woods, prohibited from the pressure here. And that's what we have to do, the work with the architect and the engineers to see what we've got. So we can be very specific today about, about the plans, except to say that there's four or five things that we, we've told DOT that we would work on before we came to them for a building permit. We told you we'd work on it before we came to the board. And those include the issues, those include the access issues, those include the water issues. And obviously, the rate of break out of the chair. So we can talk about specific parts of the map, have to answer questions. But that's why you're not seeing a beautiful plan with architectural renderings and everything else. We can't get on there, do it until we can get the lease.
Pause you one second. Kyle, is there any way to make this available to the people online or is there any way?
It's available right now too.
They are seen.
It's highlighted in red. It shows it being available.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Is that all, did you have anything else to add now? Do you have any other part of your presentation?
We did a draft, a draft presentation for tonight that I can share with you all. I did not share online yet. But it sums up our ask tonight to go forward with the process that DOT has laid out. So we can do engineering and architectural studies to answer your questions more fully.
All right. Well, to start with then, I'd like to ask if there are any members of GBOS or LUC that have questions thus far? Okay.
I'm curious in terms of what the DOT requires for public process as you guys move forward. Yes, you know, we appreciate you coming here tonight and starting this process through the joint GBOS and LUC meeting. This is helpful for us. But you know, moving forward, say, you know, you do get the lease from DOT. What sort of public process do they, do they have a public process that's, that you have to follow?
Yeah, so we're in the public comment right now. And that blend, July 13th, we have been in public comments since May 5th. And that's their public, our public process for granting the lease. Once the lease is granted, they have to do an infrastructure review. They have to do a schematic design. They have to do permitting and then a construction permit.
So we say they?
That's, that's, that's the developers working with DOT.
I see. So there will be working in conjunction with DOT?
Yes.
Because it seems like kind of a big risk, right, to take on the lease to be able to get on the land. It seems like you must have some mechanism there to allow you to explore any of the specifics of the site.
Correct. They give the other two-year window before a building permit must be granted.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
And when you go for the building permit, we need to have the other permits in place or the general, that you gotta get them. So if there's an Army Corps of Engineers permit, you're going through that process first, that kind of public comment period. GBOS would have, my activity would have a chance to work on that. We committed in an early letter to the Board of Supervisors to come back several different times during the process. Require you or not to share with you design, to work with you on access. On the trails issue, which is quite, I mean, it's a big news for trails here in Girdwood. You know, the funny thing is you come down from the chapel and you're greeted by a whole bunch of no trespassing signs. So you might not have no trespassing signs if you had that there. And so that, that could be an improvement to the trails, as for example. So we would be working with you on the trails for those issues. Okay, thank you.
I stated, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
You answered some of it, I think. So your lease, what, what steps or hurdles do you need to accomplish to sign the lease? What, you have to wait until a public comment through and then they'll review those comments and there'll be a time period after that. And based on that, they'll offer that lease or there are other steps in between there that you need before you commit to it?
So what DOT has told us, it'll take them about four to six weeks to review all the public comments. And then they would come up with a lease with all the stipulations that the public comments mentioned. You have to figure this out if you want the lease. You have to come up with options for every public, public comment they received. And then you can sign the lease. So they'll give us a list of all the public comments. We have to provide solutions or answers to those public comments. And that's when they would sign the lease after we provide that.
Based on economic feasibility or whatever. And will you be able to get in and do your geotech work during that time or?
No, they won't. They won't give us access to the property until the lease is given.
And then you have a two-year window after that.
Correct.
So you're not stuck for 40 years. Thanks.
I see that Mike Edgington has his hand up.
Hi, thanks very much for the presentation. I've got two questions. One follows on from really the comments from both Kevin and Guy. So I think what you described is that DOT might choose to make stipulations to the lease based on public comments, but it's very much their choice. I don't think there's any requirement for them to do that. And we obviously will not see what those stipulations are. We may never see what those stipulations are. I don't know if the lease is a public document. So that's step one. And obviously, the, you mentioned again, there would be a building permit at some point in the future. Assuming DOT's opinion that the airport is not subject to municipal land use code is correct. I personally don't think it is. I don't think there's, I think that's still a question that has to be decided. But assuming that is correct, then the, the issue with the building permit, again, if my understanding is that requires no public comment period, nothing else at all. That's just something that DOT does purely administratively. Is that your understanding as well?
Mike, thank you for that. We were told directly at the June 5th meeting by Vicki that it was very unlikely that we would get a building permit until we have full fire marshal approval of our plan. Now, I have to admit that that is one of the most onerous conditions that I have ever faced in my development life. But that is what she communicated. And I, my direct response, and I'm public with this, was that's a million dollars. We cannot get fire marshal approval for less. Because it requires full mechanical, full electrical, full architectural, full structural, full civil. They won't even look at your plan in plan review at the fire marshal level without having all of those submitted. So I don't know if that answers your question. But my intent in conveying this publicly is the degree of conformity to what I'm going to call programmatic or regulatory reviews is extreme. And we're inviting GBOS to be part of that process. So I don't know if there's anything that our team wants to add or edit or correct, if my understanding is not accurate.
So, so Mike, this is me. As you know, DOT's position is that for rural airports, they issue building permits. They know that we will have to work with the city on several different issues, water, certainly wastewater, possibly water. Certainly utility easements. Our, the fire chief was here at an earlier meeting, which you attended, she chaired actually, where, where she said that she would have comments with the fire marshal and so forth. And we, we sent you a letter on May 24th committing to work with you immediately on infrastructure review on, on award of the lease. Immediately on schematic design after the lease and selection of our architects. Including, we committed to a furniture on design of the project's three elements. The aviation facility, the lodge, and the activity center, employees housing. Prior to submission to DOT for a building permit, we committed to you to a public review session of what we planned to submit. And on approval of the building permit, we said we would commit to you a public meeting, identify the best methods to mitigate disruption or safety issues during construction. So if your question is, who can tell us no? I believe it's DOT who can tell us no. If you would like to work with us on getting to the right yes, we have offered to work with you to get to the right yes and to be back with you at each stage of the project. And, and you know, we're not necessarily defending the law the way it is, but it is the way it is and what we've been told by DOT.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So I appreciate, I really appreciate the, you know, the offer and the, your voluntary, because it is completely voluntary. It's not something I don't think you're mandated to do, but it's, I appreciate the offer and the intent to go through and, you know, give, give us as a community more opportunity to comment when you have further designs, et cetera, later down in the process. And I'm sure of, you know, that will end up with a better overall outcome. What I wanted to check is just if there's any mandatory steps that either DOT imposed or not. I don't believe the state fire marshal has a public comment period either. Maybe Michelle can clarify that later. But, so I just wanted to understand how much of this is required and how much of it is mandatory. And it sounds like, sorry, how much of it is required and how much of it is voluntary? And it sounds like you're, you're offering to, you know, I'm sure based on what you've said before, your assumption also is the best outcome would be something that's with the community rather than against the community. So thank you very much. That was, I actually had two questions, but I'm sorry if you have something.
Mike, just elaborate then. For example, with the Corps of Engineers, because we don't know exactly what kind of wetlands issues will be in the design to begin with. They may have a more elaborate or a less elaborate permitting process, for example. On each, on each of those, the city is, is usually read into that as part of, as part of the permitting process, one way or the other. Has been alongside them.
Right. And obviously, Corps of Engineers does typically have a public comment period as well. That was my first part. Can I ask a second question?
Sure.
Thank you. The, the only map I'm seeing online is the, is the initial map that was produced. I don't know if you have a later one. But I think I heard that the intent was to have the hotel at the lower level and probably nothing in the upper level, least minimal building in the upper level. So the lower level, again, from the maps is probably about maybe 50% bigger, maybe twice as big as the excavation that was used for the hangar. And I just wondered, although again, I'm sure the details depend on what you find from geotech after the lease is awarded. Have you got any estimate of how much excavation that's going to require and how, you know, how many truckloads, et cetera, et cetera? Because that's obviously part of the calculus for road use early on in the process.
Andrew, do you want to take a strike at that?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, anecdotally, what we've heard is there, there's anywhere from, you know, like two to 11 feet of, of sort of peak in the area. Obviously, it's a wide range and we're going to have to sort of firm that up. So I guess I don't want to give you a sort of firm estimate there until we're able to do further studies on the site.
Okay. Do you expect it's going to be comparable to the, to the hangar excavation or greater than that? Or I just want to get a sense. My feeling is it looks like it's going to be greater, but I didn't know if you had the same sense.
Comparable in what sense? In terms of?
In terms of the amount, you know, the terms of the amount of material that was moved. Which means the amount of traffic that's produced by that.
I'm not familiar with the prior project.
Okay, understood.
Someone else might be, but.
Mike, they had to cut into a very large side hill, as you know.
Yeah.
And, and level that land and, and you know, we're, we're talking about building on a gentle sloping hill coming up from the runway.
Oh, okay, great.
So that's, that's a difference. The second thing, as I said before, until we do the geotech and work with the engineers and the designers. We're not sure how much will need to be excavated versus how much might need to be piloted. And it may be preferable to have pilots for that reason. So again, because we can't really get on the land until we have a lease, we don't know that answer.
Understood. So it's probably premature. It's premature to give a detailed answer, but I got a sense of where it's going to be. Thank you.
Do we have any, I do see that we have some hands up, but do we have any other questions from members of LUC or GBOS? Let me just take these in order. So I will get, right before I get to Chief Weston, I'd like to just sum up to make sure I'm understanding where we are correctly so far. So we presented a list of concerns which are outlined in the agenda. And it's sounding like a lot of those kind of can't be directly addressed yet. So for example, the concerns around the view shed for Moose Meadows is going to be dependent on, for example, your, your financial feasibility. How many rooms you have to have or plan to have and given the, the buildable areas of the site, given the, and you can't do a lot of that work until you can get in and do your site work. So some of the question, well, it's, it's looking to me like the specific questions that a lot of the community had around the view shed and the impact on the road and the neighborhood. And in fact, the drainage can't actually be answered right now until you get a, is that, is that correct?
They won't let us on-site to do any of those geotechnical studies or technical design work until something's granted, until the lease is granted. And we would love to answer those questions. We had conversations about how it may look one way, how it may look another way. We can't formally present those in the formal building permit or even a schematic until we know how it's going to look. Once we get a feet on the ground, we can do that work.
Okay. I'd like to, if we have no other questions from the board, I'd like to have Michelle Weston.
Hi there. Michelle Weston here. Sorry, I'm not there in person. Just to clarify a few comments that the applicant made, which she was correct in saying, was that at the time of the application to the fire marshal's office is when we will, we're, we're required, he's required, he or she as an applicant is required at that time to put in a letter from the local. he or she as an applicant is required at that time to put in a letter from the local fire department saying that we're aware of the project and at that point in time, we get to, uh, review the plans, um, from our side. And then, uh, Girdwood is a deferred jurisdiction, uh, so it goes to the state fire marshal, not the Anchorage Fire Marshal, uh, for that portion. Uh, and then, uh, the other thing is that, uh, the question came up of a comment period of, at the fire marshal stage, and there isn't one that, to my knowledge. Thank you.
Okay. Um, from here, I would like, if we have no other questions from the board, I'd like to take, uh, questions or comments from within the room first, and then I will, um, and then we'll take another one from online. So yes, and, and if you wouldn't mind, if you can come up to the microphone and identify.
I want to grab that map.
That would be great.
Sure. Okay. Terry Sherwood, I live on Mount Hood. I don't like this at all. I'll say that right up front. Um, but let me get this straight. The current hangar is right here.
Correct.
And so the current road goes this way. And you're proposing a road to go this way so that the, they can access the taxiway? And then the, the lodge is going to be back here?
Generally, yes. The, I, I think the big difference here is, oh, if you do this, you, you've got to cut into a large side hill.
Yes, you do.
And, and we're trying to avoid that.
But that's where your lodge is going to go and this is the hangar?
Yeah. But what you can do theoretically is have the road off the slope hill here, have the hangar inside that arc that way in the lodge.
But so the lodge is going to be up on the hill?
It'll be.
And how big is this hangar?
Uh, that's.
Compared to the one, the new one that's already there?
I think it's probably smaller.
Okay. Um, so I guess I'll just say, well, I'm here, I was going to wait, but my biggest objection is the, um, the traffic on Mount Hood. Um, already it's horrendous. People are speeding up and down because they're late for their helicopter tour. It's really bad. I have a dog. My neighbors across the street have young children and it's been near hit many times. Um, the potholes, the, 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 the traffic on that road has just been, I can't even tell you how bad. When that hangar was being built, the amount of dirt going in and out of there for a couple of years, the dust was so thick throughout my house. It was just awful. I, you know, I'm going to move if this happens because I can't handle living through another construction, construction zone for a couple more years. It's too much. I wouldn't, I would support this project if you had another access. I, I would have no problem with it. I think it's something that Girdwood needs. But the impact you're going to put on a small neighborhood is too much. It's too much. And I cannot stand behind it and I will do everything I can unless there's another access point pointing in. And I can't do much, but I'll speak up every opportunity that I have to say, no, not until the airport, DOT, whoever does the things that they said they were going to do 20 years ago and haven't done yet. They said they were going to improve the road. They haven't done that yet. They said they're going to expand the, the runway. They haven't done that yet. They haven't done what they're going to do. So I don't even know how you could trust that they're going to be able to work with you because they haven't done the things they said they were going to do yet. And it's been 20 years. So, yeah, off the, now let other people speak.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, this is great dialogue, uh, so you can remain there. I've got two questions for you. My first comment would be, um, that we did ask DOT what's in their five to 10 year capital improvement plan. We were surprised to see a big goose egg there. So, uh, very sympathetic to your point. My question to you is, do you see the impacts in traffic to be mostly short-term during construction? Or do you have long-term?
Both.
Concerns about?
Oh, the short-term going up and under. And you know, we gave cookies to those, um, truck drivers, so they slowed down and I knew their boss and would say, here's your license plates of the drivers that were going too fast. I mean, that part wasn't so, it was the dust and the heavy nuts on the road during the construction. But I'm even more concerned about after it's built, when there's a lodge of people coming and going, you're going to have 36 employees, I read somewhere or more. They're going to be coming and going, even if they're living there, they're going to be coming and going to go eat and shop and whatever. You know, the amount of increased traffic on that road is going to be horrendous. It's going to be horrendous. And it's just too much for, it's just too much. And paving it, I think they'd go even faster. I mean, it doesn't make.
My second question is, is in terms of, and I don't mean to be provocative with this question, but, um, is your solution to stop growth and success of an expanding airport? Or is it to mitigate the impacts of that growth on the existing road system by paving it, widening it, sidewalks and that sort of thing?
I don't want any of that. I want you to build another access road like the DOT said they were going to do 15, 20 years ago and give us another access point. I have something for safety and fire stuff. Yeah. To me, that's, to me, that'd be great. And yes, it's going to cross a little bit of our precious Meadow area. But there's, if it's done correctly, it won't have as much impact. And then you mentioned, oh my goodness, I didn't even see that part. This new, um, winter sports facility. How did I didn't even calculate that many, much traffic coming and going? I mean, wouldn't it make more sense if they came from the hotel? It's not just the hotel.
I want to make sure we give some other opportunity.
I'll sit, sorry.
Thank you.
And so my name is Clay Langman. I'm, uh, I live right there. And for two years, again, just like she said, we had dust, we had dirt, we had speeding. You know, so we've already discussed all that. You know, I have some other points here I'd like to, uh, raise. What am I supposed to talk to you over them?
Uh, talk to the board and they.
Talk in the center.
There you go.
Okay, the ancillary sports facility, uh, whose advantage benefit? It's going to benefit the people who are renting from you. Uh, everybody in Girdwood, I think, has their own sports equipment, right? So Girdwoodians do not need this facility. Okay? I went through the neighborhood. We've talked about that. Is it a recreation area? Girdwood already has their own, you know? We, we already have the skiing that we need. Uh, there's a, some point about, uh, having, uh, private property signs and all that stuff. We don't need a sports facility or a hotel or people that run that managing that. That's what they're supposed to do along with the skiing associations from here and all that. So that's an inbound, a mute point, in my opinion. Uh, extending, uh, electrical services. Yeah. You know, there's going to be all kinds of funding. Uh, from my understanding, I was on vacation for three weeks visiting my land family in Lower Fort Higginson. When I found out about this, I got back just in time to hand carrying a letter into town so I can get my objection to all this, uh, opposing with, uh, the FAA and all of these people from town. There are many hurdles, yes. And the effects of the daily flights. How many more flights per day do you anticipate on the average? You know? It's like three, maybe five a day now. I live right there. I look out my window and I see the planes going like this. And I hear them. They wake me up in the morning. It's not terrible. I would not have bought, uh, the house if I didn't know we're going to have 20, 30 flights a day. Three flights a day is, 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 uh, kind of rustic. I've lived in Alaska here that, you know, but I don't want to live under a herd. Uh, there was a comment made by someone, uh, on the letters that this would be like the third busiest airport in Alaska or maybe the fourth, you know? And Jimmy can tell me how many flights a day you anticipate at an airport hotel? Which is, you know, it's, 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 uh, it's made for people flying in. So how many more flights do you anticipate? Uh, they're going to be staying for a week or two days. They're going to be going out for a recreational flight with their family, the realm, the valley or. Uh, I don't have any idea about safety. We've got helicopters moving in and out now. And now we're going to have more flights coming in and out. Uh, we have, uh, you send in, uh, my thoughts were kind of scattered here. It hurts so much stuff. Have to have a chance to write it all down. But, uh, uh, the, the, the community would benefit from having more of these rooms. I don't really understand that. Uh, we're going to be taking business away from people who rent their houses out now. So people will be staying over at your airport hotels. Uh, we're going to create those rooms for people who are here. So with people who are working here and they're not permanent residents here, they're, they're kind of renting, which means they don't have a lot of money to buy houses and all this. Are going to be renting expensive rooms at your place to stay.
Excuse me, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but, um, just in the interest of the number of people we have here, if we could focus on very specific questions. Um, so, and also.
I just, I just think that we need to see the list of their, uh, benefits to Girdwoodians written down so we can look at that and evaluate that.
Okay. So that sounds like a specific request for clarification on the benefits. Yes, absolutely. Thank you for your comments. Uh, I'd like to go online now. Mike Davidson has had his hand up for a while.
Yeah, thanks very much. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
A, a quick question, I guess maybe through the chair for the, uh, development proposers, um, if that's appropriate?
Sure.
Hey, I'm a pilot and a frequent user of the Girdwood Airport and I get concerns about, um, obstructions that occur in what's called the boundary layer. So the area, you know, near the airport. I believe many of the current leaseholders were asked or required to cut down trees due to that, but um, I guess I'd ask the folks that are proposing this. I, I know you've mentioned several times your involvement in the aviation community. Um, and so I'm assuming you would understand those concerns. I'm, I'm guessing most or all of you are pilots, but uh, I was just wondering if you could elaborate on your background in the aviation communities. You propose the aviation related development.
Sure. John, you were a licensed general aviation pilot for most of your life, most of your life. I I quit flying because I couldn't fly enough and I've lost, uh, a number of friends. I've lost close to 30 friends in, in aviation accidents. Uh, I have a son who's a Marine Corps helicopter pilot. Uh, a, and, uh, uh, my daughter dates, lives with another helicopter pilot. Uh, who, uh, has worked and lived in Girdwood. Uh, I was chairman of the Aerospace States Association, uh, when I was lieutenant governor, worked on aviation safety issues. I was on the board of Ryanair for almost 15 years, a cargo airline that works in, in Western Alaska in the bush. And, uh, uh, we had a very strong safety record, uh, very good safety record after turn, uh, after a loss before I was on the board where, where we turned the company around and, and, and built up a tremendous safety culture. Uh, uh, with that, I've been involved in capital decisions on building hangers, uh, uh, for many years. Uh, I'm on the board of, uh, PT Capital, which owns Alpine Air, uh, which operates out of Girdwood. And I have to say that this project is not, is not related to that project, uh, at all at this point. Um, I chair an advisory board for Iridium and we provide aviation safety. Uh, uh, we're the ADSB carrier, uh, for commercial aircraft control around the world. So there's many different ways I've worked with the FAA, the aviation community, my career. Uh, but, uh, I think as an Alaskan, I'm a consumer of general aviation for, for, uh, most of my 45 years here. Uh, one of the reasons why we thought this made sense is because you can't get gas at the airport now, uh, easily. You, uh, when Charlie Sessera had a, had a small FBO, uh, we used to use it to go to lodges in Prince William Sound. It's not easy to access Prince William Sound, as you know. Uh, and so we thought that would be useful. We don't see a very large amount of, of aviation on a daily basis, but we do see this as a convenient place. Uh, you know, the same way that Birchwood and Palmer have been places where people keep their airplanes because they want to be further closer to where they're flying. So that's, that's the background. In terms of being an FBO operator, uh, and so forth, we hire and experience people. Uh, there's a number of, uh, outfits in Anchorage that actually use hangers here in Girdwood for winter maintenance. Uh, and, uh, we think there's a good opportunity.
All right. Um, sure. There, within the room. I'm sorry, I don't know.
If you just want to stand right here, that's good for people who I can see you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Brown, 152 Mount Hood Drive. I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state. There's been a few assertions in the presentation, uh, that I'd like to, uh, address and I'm addressing board and land use in particular. Um, there are studies that can be done now. I think clearly the largest impact of the project is on the neighborhood. The traffic will destroy that neighborhood. Um, I believe this is a municipal land use issue. It's a code issue. It's a master plan issue. I believe it's the board's responsibility to ask the fundamental question. Is this part of the master plan? I've never seen a hotel at the airport pardon any dialogue about master planning. So, I'm asking you to please consider that before you sign any resolution. Um, there can be a traffic study now. At least as necessary to start to determine those impacts. Why, uh, the aviation community does want improvements to the airport. But that's different from 150 where you tell. So I'll keep my comments short. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, sorry. I, I think we had a response from the developers to that.
Just sure.
And then, let me speak. Sorry. I wasn't clear on that.
And the prior, uh, testimony, I, I would like the record to reflect too, though, that Chugatch Powder Guides, which has contributed significantly to this community in terms of its outdoor recreational opportunities and attracting new investments. Wanted to do exactly this, but in a scaled down manner. There's nothing that dictates that we're going to build 150 units. It's extremely ambitious. I think we all acknowledge that. But I want to acknowledge too that Chugatch Powder Guides did apply to the DOT and, and that indicates, I think, demand for a facility near the airport in an existing enterprise that we all agree, I think, most of us would agree, has contributed significant, significantly to, to outdoor recreational opportunities in Alaska.
Okay, thank you. We'll take, um, one more comment from the room and then I'll go to more comments online.
My name's Paul Orv. I'm a Girdwood resident of 30 years. Um, I own a single engine airplane. And, uh, the, I, I don't have any objection to the, uh, concept of the hotel. I know there's access issues that people have talked about. And, and I can understand those issues and I, I'm sure that, that this group and, and others will, will work to resolve those. Um, my issue is that right now there's a, a, a real lack of air, airplane parking, uh, at the airport. There's no affordable option there. There's about a dozen transient spots. There's 14 leases. And then there's the 13, uh, uh, space hangar there. Um, but that, that's out of the financial reach of a lot of people. And, um, my concern is that if you lease the remaining access on, on the, on the, on the airport in one go to a, a private developer, that there's not going to be a, um, solution to the airport parking for airplanes. And so I don't know what the concept is there. But if it, if it all goes to you guys and there's not adequate airport, airplane parking, you know, that, that solution will be forever foreclosed. And, and so I would like to see some airplane tie-down leasing opportunities, some additional transient, because right now the transient is chock full. And, and you know, people park the airplanes, I park my airplane there each summer. And it's a real problem, you know what I mean? And if this whole area was leased in one shot to you guys, there would never ever be a solution to that problem. And that's, that's my concern. And I know there's other concerns that are more like the community has to deal with access and the development and the hotel and all that stuff. And I don't want to shortchange that. But I don't have any objection to your plan to develop part of the airport. But I do want to see a solution to the current airplane parking situation. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Just as, as we look at this right now, the transient parking that you're referring to is this block.
Yeah, it's about twelve blocks, right.
And it's, it's, and, and so if kind of on that side between there and the runway, there were a hangar, the business plan for the hangar is questioning whether it would be leasing out in a sense, condo hangars that are out there, or actually a hangar for a hotel type facility that would be itinerant for transit. And you know, it might be that you might be able to rent a tie-down from us, which would have power, keep your batteries going.
It's a supercut.
There are people who want, they're into block, and so it could be that part of the tarmac could be services to offer what you're actually looking for. And it could also be that you've got a hangar where there's no hangar that you can pull in and warm up if you need to do maintenance or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's encouraging, but you know, what, what I'm concerned about is that the original plan said, you know, there's twenty-four transient spots and then you're going to get more traffic down here potentially. And so unless, you know, my proposal to DOT, and I wrote, I wrote on this, I said they should take one of those lots and devote it to leasable tie-down spots and leave you the rest without, without prejudice to your proposal. That not all of, all three lots, if I'm looking at that right, I don't know if I am, but the, the rest of the airport apron would be consumed by your development.
In fact, there's not really an apron there now at all.
Well, I, there's no.
Somebody has to level the ground and pave it.
Fair enough. And, and I suggested that DOT do that at their own expense.
So might we.
Okay, fair enough. But, but what I'm saying is there's no development on the west side of the airport at all. Okay? And if you guys are consuming all of the east side, you need to address the existing problem, which is lack of airport airplane parking.
Sure. And I, I want to thank you, and I didn't get your name.
Paul Orman.
Paul, I thank you, and I guess I'd say we heard some similar comment this earlier meeting. Oh, the, the business plan for the aviation part of the building is, is intended to address some of this problem.
Okay.
Whether or not it's free.
I don't, I don't care about free, but it's got to be accessible to the public and not consumed by the development.
I, I believe that you'll have that. I mean, I've watched this at Lake Hood where private developers have created new slips so that there are more slips available. That, that's the general responsibility that we see ourselves taking.
Okay. So that, that's my point, is it? Because there are eighty airplanes at that facility right now. It's different than the original airport master plan. The last one I got was two thousand and one, and so twenty-eight airplanes there. And, and this airport right now is overused. And so my point is you have to address the existing use before you grant the lease to the rest of, it's not an apron now, but it's the only place that development could occur here. So that's my point.
Thank you for that. So I want to note that we're about an hour into this so far. And I want to make sure that we have an opportunity for everybody to speak. We have so many people in the room and also people online with their hands up. We do have a, looks like another question from a GBOS member, Mike. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, well, first of all, I'll just say, I think I have to make a motion to extend the discussion by, for longer. I think after an hour we have to do that. So I'll make that motion first.
Okay.
There's a second here.
Okay. Any objections? That I'm going to do this by consensus as well. All right, so we will extend. Yes.
And then my actual question was actually for, for Paul again. Can you, as a member of the audience, could you, could you say, I think the, the plan, the thing I've seen in the airport, the airport layout plan suggests about twenty-odd tie-downs in, in the area that's proposed to be leased. What would be kind of a reasonable number to, if, if there were a, you know, ten, twelve added, would that be a reasonable extension for public parking or for very low, low cost tie-down? Or would it really need all twenty? Or would it need all twenty?
The, the two thousand and one airport master plan identified twenty-eight aircraft at this, at this airport. You know, just looking up and down the row there, I'm thinking there's seventy or eighty airplanes here now, aircraft, including helicopters. Okay? So I, I'm thinking, and right now the transient is, I think it does, maybe one more or one less or maybe two more. I don't know, but it's about a dozen, which is overused. So I'm thinking thirty, forty, and maybe that includes a transient to your hotel. I don't know, but, but there's got to be more room for air, aircraft parking there that doesn't involve buying a hangar for four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so just, but so just for clarity then, the, the diagram we're seeing on the screen now, that map has normally twenty odd. Do you, you think that would be inadequate even if, if that was the only thing that happened?
I do not. I, I think you're in thirty spots that are leasable to everybody or increased transient, if, if that's the way it goes. But I think a leasable tie-down is the way you go here. If you look at Birchwood, there's a lot of leasable tie-downs there. And there's even a list, I think, to get on that. And so, yeah, okay.
Okay, let me, let's move on to Kate Sandberg online.
I would like to go back to traffic. I looked at your statistics and I see that talk about driving groups, which means buses, is that correct?
You're coming in a little bit choppy, Kate. It's, can you repeat your question, please?
Yes. Does the arriving in groups in terms of traffic mean buses?
I cannot understand that.
The last word is what we meant.
It's the last word?
Buses, buses.
Buses.
Oh, oh, okay, right. Thank you.
How many buses per day?
This state buses government, why do you need these paraphrases? I think that's called out in your letter here. I'll put that up.
With that in mind, let's look for five. I count a hundred and fifty-four car trips to your hotel or back from your hotel per day at high occupancy. That includes employees who are not in the housing and or visitors. I would like to know, also, we're talking about delivery trucks. I can't, I don't know how many you're talking about, but I would like to know how you are going to satisfy DOT security with this amount of traffic.
Okay, did that question come through?
So I can't give you all the specific answers to questions because we've, we have said with DOT that we would do a traffic study as part of our feasibility design. And we also said to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors that we would work to coordinate the infrastructure plan. So, so every question that you've asked or questions that we've asked as well. I think the other thing I should say about transportation, if we went, if we had that other map up there for a second. I think there's, there are several different ways that, that access to the airport is discussed before. There's, there's the idea of extending our program there so that everything would be coming about where, where you've got, where, where kind of goes to the hotel now. There's, there are other possibilities, including coming in, you know, if, you know, across the river. Because I know the Girdwood Board of Supervisors is looking at another escape room from, from town as, as, as something that's discussed. We had a nice lower of wink this morning. And so, so that could be part of it. There's some bus and shuttle discussions that we've had that happened at some other hotels. It's not ideal for, for us or our guests, but that's, that's a possibility. And this is all things that we intend to work out. And I think there's more than a dozen different options that go into the trout, the transportation study.
May I, would you, it is unbelievable to have a hundred and fifty cars go by your house every day on a dirt road. The impact on this community is huge. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Do we have another comment from the room? Shannon? But let me go with, sorry, let me have Shannon first and then, and then I'll go with you, is that all right? And then I, Deborah, I do see you online. We'll get back to online in a moment.
Shannon O'Brien, community member. I do not live on Mount Hood, but I spend a lot of time walking on Mount Hood because my son is obsessed with planes. It's not a wide road and it can be a very scary road. There's probably not even enough room for sidewalks. So I feel, you know, I don't feel it the same way they do, but I feel it as far as safety. I'm going to say to the board, GBOS and land use, I feel like it would be premature. I'm sorry to give a letter of support at this point because there's so many unknowns. And there's got to be a way to do maybe a letter of support for them to do more discovery, as the engineer was saying. I don't feel like we need to say we support a project that we don't really know about yet when there are so many negatives people are saying that, that will impact them personally and not necessarily a balance of things that would be given back to our community. I love Lands End. I love your condos. You did a beautiful job. That beach is amazing. You know, the planes in Homer go across the bay. They don't go over the community where here, if you're out on your deck, you can't hear your, you know, family talking when they fly because typically they're just kind of practicing or going somewhere close or something. So it is a little bit different than Homer, although I do think that you guys did a really good job. I appreciate that you're here. I appreciate everything that you're saying and that you're looking into. But there's a lot of vague verbiage that, you know, we, we want, I want to trust you, but I don't know you. And Phil, it's built, you don't know that impact.
I feel that meadow, like cutting into that hurts me like my gore because I spent so much time recreating there. And I don't necessarily, I agree with the community, know if it would benefit our community to have an auxiliary center there. So if you're not fully attached to doing a hundred and fifty rooms, maybe you can scale it back first. You know, we have a thriving Nordic sun. People here are on their board. We have other organizations, outdoor organizations that are, you know, maybe you could partner with or something. They're just, I'm just not sure, you know, the restaurant won't be open to the community, probably so that there's not as much traffic. That makes sense, but you know, that doesn't benefit our community. Not that you need to benefit me because you're business people. No, you don't have to please me or my community. But you know, if you are saying that your core is here and that you love Girdwood, maybe rethinking things before GBOS gives a letter of support. I don't know, maybe another thing to do. There's no rush, I assume.
Thank you, Shannon.
I have a question for the.
Okay.
How, how would you recommend that we navigate this condom? We can't get to even discussing ten rooms, let alone a hundred and fifty, without having support and getting to a yes. We can't even begin to discuss a level of investment that we make in the community to improve the community without getting to yes. So without your support, it falls to a no and we don't even get to the stage. We don't even get to rehearsal. So what is the, what is your recommendation to this committee on how this community can get to yes? And at that point, you don't have, we're not asking you to trust us. We want to be trustworthy and we want to earn your trust, but we're not asking you to trust us. What we are willing to do is define a process that is so rigid, essentially, that invites this board into the process where you don't need to trust us.
Well, I can say that it doesn't seem that rigid because you're not having to follow guidelines around the community. So there does seem to be wiggle room. As this engineer said, I don't unfortunately know all of the logistics. I just, you know. So as this gentleman here said, it does seem like there is a process that can be. And maybe if, if the airport or DOT hears from us, since they have loose regulations anyway, and we say, we support you staking out where you're going to do it, you know, or taking a core or things that actually would probably benefit them as well, or maybe they put somebody into it as well. If they've promised the community that they would develop the airport and they still haven't even done that, you know, it seems like they can bend a little too. So I don't believe in no ever. So I would say there's got to be a way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Hey, my name's Tim Marks. I also live on Mount Hood. I'd like to let you know, I wasn't, really wasn't planning on speaking, but I felt that I have to now. When I moved here in nineteen ninety-four, Alpine Air had two fixed wing planes. There was, now they have as many as seven helicopters there per day. So we listen to those helicopters constantly through the day. Sometimes over twelve hours a day, starting at eight o'clock, after eight o'clock at night. There was no CPG. It was a parachute club back then. So there was occasional flights taking off from there. There was no thirteen hangar condo. However, just so you know that I'm not anti-everything, I was there for CPG at the beginning and went to the board meetings because they were on yearly, they were given yearly license to operate for, for I don't know how many years at the beginning of the whole operation. The majority of the people that are here are all, are my neighbors that live here in Girdwood. They're here for the same reason. Most of them, they don't want to see the traffic. The traffic's already destroying our neighborhood. When we, when they added thirteen more hangers, they doubled the traffic in our neighborhood. I'd like to see the board of supervisors make DOT or the hotel owners build an all. I'd like to see the board of supervisors make DOT or the hotel owners build an alternate route. It was on the 90s, I moved in 94 here. It was already on the plan for them to put an alternate route going into the airport. I feel with you guys, a sweetheart deal at less than $50,000 a year for a lease that you can afford to spend the $2 million to build the road, somewhat coming in from a different direction. And I think that the, that, and also we need to think about the home values for the people that live there because I mean, it's, it's, it's absolutely crazy. I walk up and down that road at least three times a day with my dog. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I would like to, Deborah, now you've been waiting for a while. Thank you. So Deborah, online?
Thank you, Jennifer. I have three quick questions. Did, in the beginning of the presentation, did I hear somebody say that they were going to extend the airport road? Excuse me, the airport tax, the airport, not the road, the airport taxi runway. Sorry, my term, I'm not an aviation like specialist here. Who said that?
So that was in the, that was in the DOT airport plan? To extend the taxiway, the runway and, 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 I forgot. And as, as earlier, as I, as I, I know, I know the story.
Okay, another quick question I have for you is, so a lot of people are not making these meetings because of time restraints, just redundancies from the developers and maybe, I don't want to be all negative here, but it's just, it's not always like the easiest thing for people to attend meetings. Also, many individuals have, for whatever reasons, not comfortable having verbal testimony. So with that being said, that the comment, the comment period was extended through DOT. I'm wondering, you made some comment to this, but I'm really wondering, are you able to look at the comments and, that were submitted to DOT?
No, we asked that at our last meeting, a couple of weeks ago. They released that public comment.
So, excuse me, I didn't quite understand it. So the developers are not looking at the written comments. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, too, you're talking about that, I said.
Okay, so with that, I'm not here to berate and be negative. However, I'm like wondering, like, you know, you came in, first thing you said was that you've had these great conversations with people and support. Well, I've had completely opposite. I only know one person and I've talked to many people in the last 60 days about this and only one person is in favor of this. So I'm wondering how you can really justify and like assume that you have the support when you're not seeing these really efforts that the community has put out in putting letters and comments, suggestions out to DOT. That seems a, well, I don't know how, you know, you can think about that. The other question I had for you, and then I just wanted to make one more comment, is on your letter that you wrote back to GBOS under employee housing, it to me seems a little bit confusing and I, maybe I'm just not reading this correctly, but could you just expand on this a little bit? When you, the three line, the two lines, no, excuse me, the three lines. Were you saying that you anticipate a peak staff of 62 people? You anticipate providing onsite housing for 30 employees? Can you break it down a little bit more? I don't really understand that, that equation. Do you, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
I know, I know. There's a need to be. I think the lettering speaks for itself. That's the best estimate that we can provide of employee housing.
Okay, well, it seems a little contradictory in just those three sentences. I guess the last thing that I would really want to say tonight is that I'm not in favor of GBOS providing a letter of support to the develop, Fisher Valley Development and/or DOT for mainly the reason that we just can't put a blanket it, support out here when so much is unknown. And I guess maybe this is your catch 22 that you're having. It's more important for the community that live here year round for many, many years. And this is not an in my backyard. This is a Girdwood community major impact. And again, I just really would echo some of the other people that made that very clear tonight in the public, in the room, that I do not support GBOS putting that letter out tonight.
Thank you, Deborah. Before I call on Michelle or Mike, sorry, we need to mute her. Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to see if we have anybody else in the room who wanted to comment.
Hi, Cody Rice. I live on Mount Hood with my family. I echo the comments of other folks here. My kids play on that street every day. My dog's been hit by a car there. I was texting with Hugh Short from Alpine Air this morning about the traffic conditions and Girdwood Board of Supervisors has listened to our testimony about the traffic, the safety of that part of Girdwood and has agreed to do a traffic study. And the idea of massively expanding the volume of traffic on what is a very narrow dirt road troubles me to the point where I'm not sure that I want to continue to live over those circumstances. I'm also concerned by the fact that we continue to hear, trust me, trust me, trust me, but there doesn't appear to be any actual leverage. So I've spent opposite. This is actually my time. So if you want to excuse during your time, go ahead. This is my time, excuse me. I'm unclear what that leverage is because what we were told is that we had to provide comments to DOT before we had actually seen a plan that had been approved. So like the comments are based on our assumptions of what the world may look like. Further, it's unclear to me what the benefit to the community actually will be. We're hearing that there won't be access to the airport for their, for their restaurant, etc. It's not clear that people will continue to have access to the trail system there, which is heavily used by pedestrians and dog walkers and others. It's unclear to me what the benefit is that justifies building something under, essentially from my perspective, I'm an economist by background, a subsidized rate for DOT airport standards that's not consistent with what the community said they want. I believe Mike Edgerton from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors said that pretty clearly in one of the other board supervisor meetings. Now, if you were listening to the community, you wouldn't be proposing this because it's not consistent with the current plan. So I don't understand what the benefit is to the community. I don't see why GBOS should support this. It's concerning to me for my family in terms of the volume of traffic. And I don't understand on its face how you can say that this is an airport use when by definition, your own statistics here are saying that most of the passengers are going to ride on buses and shared transportation. They're going to arrive on wheels, not on planes. So I don't understand why you should get a subsidized rate to develop something that's not consistent with what the community actually is telling you they want.
Okay, thank you, Cody. Thank you. I want to, um, I don't want to cramp anybody's style, but in the interest of moving along in time, you guys, if we could not do the applause, that would be great. I know that, that would be great. Mike, you've had your hand up for a while. And then, and then I'll hit Michelle, sorry.
Yeah, one of the suggestions we heard earlier was that the traffic impact analysis does not require any, any groundwork or any, you know, any soil analysis or anything else. That's something that's just done based on a proposed size of the development and existing traffic conditions. So I wondered if the developers would be interested in, you know, I think they've made a commit, they've made at least a written commitment to doing a traffic impact analysis. It may be that DOT requires it. That's not clear to me. But is that something you could start now and produce, and produce data for? For, you know, various sizes. I know the actual hotel size may depend on what the geology says, on what the geotechnical thing says and obviously your own economic analysis. But, you know, for a variety of different hotel sizes, if we had a traffic impact analysis, I'd feel a lot more comfortable about talking about, you know, how many, how many trips it's going to produce, etc. I mean, I did some, a quick back of the, back of the envelope calculation using the ITE tables and came up with pretty big numbers. And then I've heard much smaller numbers as well today. So I think a traffic impact analysis would definitely help us answer those questions. Is that something you could commit to, you know, doing like imminently before you get the lease? Or is that something you would not be able to do?
Well, Mike, we could put that into a bucket, I guess, of a number of studies that are incredibly important to evaluate impacts to the community, economic feasibility, etc., etc. It's, it's a function of writing checks before we even have a dress rehearsal and even tepid support and I'll add conditional support from the community. If it's just a blanket no, you know, it's asking a lot of anybody to write a check under that circumstance. If it's a conditional yes, we would approve of this development with conditions A, B, C, D, E, and F. At least there's a pathway to justifying investments of that nature. The second answer is, we asked this same question to DOT. And the answer that we got was there's overlapping jurisdiction. FAA funds, for example, built that or contribute, contributed to the building of that airport. And so getting permissions from the overlapping jurisdictions is necessary even to get permission to do a traffic study.
You can't do a traffic study on the nearest valid owned road from L.A.S. highways up to the state owned property?
I can't answer that, but I can't just.
That's what all the homeowners are asking.
But practically speaking, you would want to do a traffic study that would look at point, the point of beginning to the point of.
Yeah, well, it's the same amount of traffic all the way through.
Excuse me, can we stick to the queue? We, we do have a, we have a queue of people who have been waiting to comment.
So I don't know if that answers my question.
Thank you. No, no.
I can add to, add to the question. And, and I want to maybe respond to the last, last speaker. What this is, is as soon as you get a lease, you're paying $50,000 a year for the land, which you can't even use, but you can at least go out and do the tests. For example, the size of the hotel really depends on soil issues and so forth. So if you can't get that lease, you're not going to go spend the money to do that test. On the, on the transport options, I, I live in the neighborhood. I'm at Donnarumma, okay? I walk on Mount Hood quite a bit. I truly understand everything I've heard. I've got dogs who have almost been hit on that road. I've seen probably your children, my children, when they were younger, walking down there. We've got to get a good access issue for this. There's, there's no question in my mind. Okay? It's the, the question of whether that's the only access issue, whether we can work with the city and the state to, and, and the lodge owners of a competing lodge on, on some access at their end. We don't know until we know we've got a piece of land that we, we could work on. And we've said from the very beginning, I mean, literally, we had discussions with DOT about this for a year before they would even put this out for public comment. And we listed a dozen ideas and every single one of them I could take a pot shot at. Okay, but at least it was what would we have a transportation study do? All right, and if we did that, we'd look at it. And would we be involving every house in the neighborhood? Absolutely. I don't, I certainly don't want somebody coming to a hotel that I'm a part owner of on a, on a non-collective road, collector road, you know, hit anybody's kid, you know? And, and so we've, we've got to address that issue. We know that's the largest issue that we've got, okay? And here I'm making the statement on the public record, but it's, it's much more than counting how many cars are there now? How many cars are there when there's an airshow? How many cars are there when a airman have a pancake breakfast? How many cars are there when, well, you know, whatever? And there's, there's special events there one way or the other. And what, what could it be? And we already know the answer is that's not the right kind of road. We already know that. So we're going to try to, we know we're going to be back here working with you to try to get a better, better transportation access issue. And we'd all really like to be on the same side because we're not, we're not trying to be presumptive. We frankly have been very surprised how the leasing end of DOT and the development end of DOT are not as coordinated as I might have expected.
So thank you for that. And I want to get back to some comments from the room.
Can I just respond to, yeah, just two quick things. One, I appreciate John's answer. I didn't quite answer my question, but I think I, I, what it did say is, I think there's some poss, there's some opportunity here of conditional, of conditional decisions, yes, but, or yes, if. And the other thing is, you, you were saying me about the bits of DOT not talking to each other. Have you not spent any time in state government? And then the very, the very last thing is, I think we have to, to extend beyond an hour and a half. I think we have to, we have to either stop the discussion or suspend rules. So I propose we move to suspend rules so we can continue this discussion.
I don't, just for, for transportation, I don't think we have any time limit on this meeting. I don't, was there?
There is time limits on items.
I understood this to be a little bit different because as it had, had we numbered these items differently, if we put three, four, five, 100?
Okay, got it. Yep.
That's, I appreciate, I appreciate the point of order, Mike. Thank you.
That's a good workaround. Great.
Okay, I did have a rough idea that, I thought the meeting was to run from six to eight and I, I do want to not have it drag on. I also wanted to appreciate your moment of levity there. Thank you. And I wanted to quickly acknowledge that I can see the potential for a frustration at a, at a fairly obvious impasse where you as developers have tried to be very open with what you can share, but your needs around having support for something are problematic when this is not consistent with community plans for the area. It doesn't mean it's a no, right? But it's not consistent with existing community plans for the area. So us getting to a place of support would, is, would be really tricky considering that we would have to go against those plans without a broad, universal community support and without specific concrete answers to some of the things we asked for. To understand your frustration, you've made it very clear you can't provide some of those answers. And I believe you, you're at an impasse with DOT and what DOT allows you to do. But that's not something that we have a workaround for either.
I don't care if I could say this again. What, what we're asking for right now is essentially an option on a piece of land that we know we have to work with these issues on. But if we don't have the option of a piece of land, you know, I, I can tell you, I'm part of a group that owns 13 hotels in other places in the world. I had a presentation this week, if somebody wants to build hotels in place of us. I'd really like to see this happen here because I think if we do this right, the community will be a huge enhancement. But all we're really asking for right now is the right to go through design and engineering process. It's an option. There is no way we can sue DOT if they don't give us a building. They can decide not to give us a building permit based on the color of their skin in the building. I mean, there, there is no requirement that they give a building. But there is a requirement on us that we have a lease before we start even doing one, one dig of a hole to figure out the hydrologies.
Understood. Understood, well, I have appreciated that I have learned some things tonight, even if you are feeling like there's a information you can't share. And I've appreciated the questions that people have asked. I know I have at least two hands in the room. So very quickly, Chief Weston, did you have something that you could?
I'm doing this as, as myself, not as Chief Weston, so.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So I had a couple thoughts. The first is, you know, we all have to recognize that there's going to be future development at the airport. And, you know, we have had DOT do it in a very slow manner, but we have to recognize that more development is coming. And so if we, if we think about what do we want for the future, regardless of what goes in there, I would suggest to you that having an access road to the airport that doesn't go through a neighborhood is the right way to go. And so having an access that already goes on the highway, Aliaska Highway, to the resort that already handles large bus traffic or whatever, and then having it loop through past employee housing or however it could work, and down to the other side into the back of the airport might be what, regardless of what happens, has to go there, right? Because we know that there's going to be more development at the airport. And so why not have an opportunity to do it the right way or at least another way? Now, that wouldn't, I wouldn't say take out that whole access off Mount Hood. I'd say put a Knox box, a Knox gated there, a Knox box on a gate there. So there'd still be emergency access, there'd still be access for the walkers and everybody, but you'd have the opportunity to go a different way into that. Having seen the big coach buses trying to navigate the mine roads area lately, it's kind of wacky. And so I, I don't think having big, those big buses going through Mount Hood is, is probably a very good long-term solution for anything. And then secondary, and then I had the second question. I heard something about small recre, outdoor recreation place. I kind of wanted, I have, when you say that to me, I, I think so many things. And so I was wondering if they could elaborate, maybe I heard it wrong, but I wonder if they could elaborate it. Would it be like, oh, in Argentina, you can go cross-country skiing and then you can stop at a little hut and have a glass of wine? And there's a wood stove and it's super nice and then keep cross-country skiing? Or would it be, oh, I don't know, curling or something else? What would that outdoor recreation spot look like if I heard that right?
Thank you, Michelle.
So Chief Weston or Citizen Weston, uh, the, the concept, I, I use Muspato as less than I should, but as much as I can for snowshoeing, hiking and cross-country skiing. I often have guests, not everybody in Girdwood has the right equipment. Their says, because my kids were put on long marches to cross-country skis, they haven't kept up with their equipment occasionally, they'll ski with dad. But the idea of a, of a small place where you could wax your skis and, and, you know, get the, get the help and maybe store your skis if you're staying at the hotel or live in, live in the community and want to ski from there was the concept. Obviously, that concept ties in with, you've got a wonderful trail system. I remember when Senator Stevens helped get us the money for the, for the bigger trail system. The parking lot at Arlberg is often full. I've been there when I couldn't find a place to park. And so the option was that may be something that becomes a nice service with, with the lodge. Other, other year-round efforts, if you go to ski towns, just as we see it here, you've got mountain bikes, you've got hiking, you've got hellhiking. And, and so the idea was that that would be a concept there. Frankly, it's, it's, uh, it's not as well defined as it should be, but we considered it as an outbuilding rather than specifically within the hotel.
Thank you for that. I have at least two more people who want to speak in the room. Could I acknowledge Larry? Would you like to?
So I wanted to address the willingness to come forward to the community and be specific. I represented a developer that developed a very large facility here. And I can tell you that I went to innumerable meetings. We were purchasing the land from public entities. Probably still the largest land purchase from the Heritage Land Bank by far. And I can tell you that the public input actually made the project much better. And we had to go through, and, and all those public meetings weren't, you know, just for the, you know, the good feelings, you know, to establish a good relationship. I mean, they required public meetings. So, and we had a lot of conditions we had to meet. We not only had to meet municipal standards, but we actually built a thing to building safety standards. So we had inspections, the only buildings in this community that have ever gone through building safety. So my point being is that we did a lot of that as, as a good developer should and made, you know, a big commitment to building to municipal standards, you know, doing all the utility investments, you know, all that. And we drove right through a, you know, a, a cow path, basically a community road that only had, that was much smaller than this one. And so that would be my recommendation of my suggestion. When you say what should you do, you know, come, be willing to say, well, we'll see to it that the roads are built and that the, you know, in, you know, that the access is there. I'm not saying who has to pay for it, just so long as it isn't, the taxpayer is good with the test to pay for. Because that wouldn't be fair, you know? Because right now, what we hear, I'm not, you know, what I've heard is that the DOT doesn't feel that they are subject, that any development out there is subject to municipal standards. You know, that there, you don't, we don't have to comply to conditional use permits, all those sorts of things. Yes, you have to get a, maybe you have to get a 404 permit, but I think that's actually the, uh, I thought that the Supreme Court actually threw that one out. But we'll see. But there's going to be more hotels and more hotel rooms built here. There's one just announced permitting for last night that I saw. And I'm sure that Pomroy, I know Pomroy explains the bill for. So, so there's going to be more hotels and there's going to be more impact. But I rep, you know, and like I said earlier, public comments that we got improved the development. You know, we had conditions that we had to, you know, that we would fire in a truck driver that got a, they got a ticket on the road coming into Girdwood. So, you know, you know, we went to a lot of effort to meet the conditions that the community put on us. And I would, I would encourage you to, you know, to, you know, to say that. I mean, we came forward with plans that said, this is what the building's going to look like, you know, generally. You know, before we knew whether we could even buy it. So that'd be how I think the development ought to take place.
Thank you, Larry, thank you. All right, guys. I want to make sure we have time for Ralph. I believe you had some comments to make as well.
Been a long time.
Yes, yeah.
I'm gonna echo a little bit about what the engineer, I forgot your name. And I've done a little bit of development myself. And you've got to make them some commitments upfront. You say how much dough you're going to spend, what's the size of the project and all that. And I think you guys could do that. I think you could say, I'm only building a 50-unit lodge. Okay, a lodge, not a hotel. 150 units isn't a lodge at all. You don't get the support from the community to come in and say, I want to build a 150-room hotel and run it through your neighborhoods and all that. And I know that, that thing is being addressed right now, you know, about whether it's Mount Hood or it's another road or other. But I think you guys can do some due diligence, the four of you, without hiring a million-dollar team to come in and do that. Do like Terry did, do like, um, Peyton did, all those others. Just start counting buses, do it yourself, how many, how many you think would fit in there? Then say, am I trying to put the proverbial 10 pounds in the five-pound bag out there? What all are you trying to do to gain support from the community? Don't say 150 in a hotel if you don't mean it, you know? And come out and say what you mean really want to do, and maybe you'll get the support. But I think you can go out, I think you can do this. You're getting a great deal on the land, so maybe you don't need to do a 150-unit hotel. So I don't, I don't think that the board could give that support right now until you guys go out and do a little more due diligence yourself. I think you're, you're kind of picking out there right now to just see how much you can do. And so that's what I would like to see you do is, is to get out there and put your pencils to it and come back to the community again. But this is what we really want to do now. This, we've talked to the community, heard your people's voices, and we recognize the issue with, with Mount Hood, all the other things. And come back with something good and have another meeting and see if you don't fluff that the other people got today. So that's what I've got to say.
Thank you, Ralph. And Kyle.
There's some, uh, some quick comments. Yeah, I think this is a three-legged stool and we're missing one person right now, that's DOT in the room. There's a partnership that's not there and, and you are in partnership with the DOT. DOT recruited you by being at that booth that you walked by one day at aviation show and said, come develop on our land. And then they make it almost impossible for you to do it in a way that's straightforward and honest, just what they're, they're thinking. So I think DOT needs to be in this room. They need to be listening to these complaints and these requirements that are needed. Uh, the other aspect is, I was the first Talison Lake Tahoe that saw every truck that came down there for the toll time, this building there raising two children. And it was a mess. The planning was terrible, the calculations were terrible. They had no idea how much dirt they were taking out of there. And in the end, we're still dealing with the counter effect that the industrial park took all that dirt and it's a mess down there right now. It's just piles everywhere and that's, that's a land manager issue of that land. But that hangar had escaped going through the requirements of dealing with that soil because they found some way to take it. And now the community is like, we're screwed. So good planning is all I can recommend. I feel like you're on that path, you're trying to accomplish that path. And if you can get DOT in there to help and start listening at these meetings attending, and if they show up and they're undercover listening on this meeting here, they can understand the frustrations that are coming out about this airport and the lack of planning and how out of date it is. So that's just my comments, thank you.
Thank you for that, Kyle. So I would like to wrap this up unless the way of, and in particular, I would just like to check with any members of the board if they have any final questions or comments of either board that they would like to make. Yes.
I just wanted to say thanks for the efforts that you all put in to be transparent. I think it's the third meeting that we've come to now. And yeah, towards, you know, them all. And I really appreciate you putting yourself out there to hear these concerns. I live on Timberline, so I'm on the other side of town, but we have some traffic issues that have increased in the last couple of years. And for me, when I first heard what you all wanted to do, you know, my big concern was the residents in Mount Hood for sure. And I, I think you see that and you've heard that tonight. Clearly, that's a, that's a real and significant challenge that'll need to be overcome. But I just want to say thank you because I really wish that all developers that are trying to do something in Girdwood had come to more meetings before community and listened to these things and asked really a lot of good follow-up questions. And so, you know, I know that this will have a significant impact on people on, on Mount Hood and, and that is my concern as well with this project. But thank you for, for being transparent and coming out and answering our questions as best as you can at this point. And I guess I would just say to the community, we may never get a shot to have developers come into our community and be this transparent again. So I would like to see us work with these folks and, and figure out a way to come up with a yes. Because I totally, I've been a small business owner and I totally get that like, if, if the community's not behind you, can't come to a compromise or a solution, it's not worth you all putting a lot of investment into the project and can move forward. And I, I think that we as a community clearly acknowledge that, that like, seems like a pretty good group of folks from, in front of us right now. And, you know, they've put a lot of things in writing. They've said a lot of things on the record that I think have made me feel better about this. So, yeah, I just, I just encourage us all to have an open mind while really acknowledging that there is real and significant challenges that need to be addressed with this. And, and that if we can get developers sort of committed to working with the community to address those things, that's a win, I think, for.
Hey, anyone else? All right, all right. I would like to echo that, thank you, thank you genuinely. Oh, sorry, I didn't see.
Oh, sorry, I, I was. Could we do something formal to try to get DOT in here? I don't know if there's a process, if I could get some memo letter and say like, hey, we'd really like you to come here and do a presentation or just, just talk to us. Does that, I really agree with Kyle the same, like it, it does feel like we're two legs of a three-legged stool right now. That's kind of sweeping following to me, so. But there's a way to do. I don't know if we just send them an email and they just come on their own or if we can do it formally or with the process.
I think, I, I think we can definitely have both, actually, both legs of the stool requests that I think it would be mutually beneficial. But we already, it's, it's a, it's tricky the way they have set up the process at this point for.
So I think we've, well, the first thing I want to say is that, and I have to give Vicki, Vicki credit. They, they had a lot of this discussion inside DOT before they ever put this up. They, they said, we know you're going to have to go work with them. That was number one. Number two, this is the rural airport leasing division. It's not the DOT planning division, that sort of thing. So maybe that you want to talk to some others at the, at the commissioner, the department. But the main thing I will say is that Vicki has told me she has spent hours on the phone with Girdwood residents, answering questions and is available to do that. She's received the comments, she's told us there's, I, I think with, it would be fair to say that she said that almost all the comments are on the lines of the same three or four issues that we talked about in your agenda, we talked about our, our deal. We, we all know that those are the issues that we've got to get through. And we are very sure that whatever kind of lease is given to us, which we will pay, is going to reference, answer those questions to joint satisfaction before any building permit decision. Okay, and very obviously, the biggest issue is access. Like, you know, hydrology, if you get good engineers, good constructors, and, you know, DOT learned their lesson the last time, they're all armed and prepared on that issue. On the view shed, they haven't had to deal with that before, but you've got kind of the competing thing between building height at the airport where the land is lower, but you can't have this high a building next strip as you do there. So one of the, just to answer Monique's comments, one of the things is trying to figure out, can you have a, you know, a three-story building, a three-story building without impinging on the view shed as well as that. So those are the kinds of things that we have to work out. That's all based on, on the soil and the hydrology. So what we're really asking for is, is chance to buy a lottery ticket. You don't know that we're going to win, you don't know that we're. You don't know that we're going to actually be able to build this thing. Uh, but we can't really go do the work in this field. Yeah. That's an optional.
Okay. Well, and, and thank you. Thank you again so much for your willingness to dialogue. And to the extent that we were able to keep this about, uh, questions and dialogue back and forth, I really appreciate um that. And Mike, it looks like you have something you wanted to add.
Yeah. So um, and again, I appreciate Kyle's comments about DOT not being here. Uh, the core problem here to me is access is absolutely a problem, first of all. But there's a, there's an even deeper problem of, um, you know, the DOT is, has taken the position that they can completely ignore all um sort of land use requirements, ignore comprehensive plans, ignore all our plan elements, et cetera, for any development on the airport. I don't think that's at all justified. Um, when they, the, the legal opinion they have from ninety-six, I'm not a lawyer, but the legal opinion I have, they have from ninety-six seems to be based on a misreading of statute. Um, so I honestly don't know that's a supportable decision if push comes to shove. Um, and if the, if the development was going forward using the municipal process, or first of all, the core, the basic problem there is hotels are not permitted uses of airport land at the moment. But there is a path to change that. So um, I think there's a, there's a way in which we could definitely see a, a, a path forwards if it was going through the municipal process. The problem I'm still stuck with is that the DOT landowner says they don't have to follow those rules. The developer is saying they kind of agree with the landowner that they don't have to follow those rules. And um, we do have to follow those rules. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we as a board have to follow municipal process and municipal code. And municipal code says that um, this, the, you know, hotel development is not a permissible land use in Girdwood Airport land. So we're stuck at this fundamental problem that while hangar development is, tie downs are, um, you know, maintenance facilities, they're all acceptable. But the fundamental problem here is that the developer is asking for something which is not a permissible use of the land according to land use code, which we, you know, have to pay attention to and follow. And they're not asking for a change in the code. They're just asking, they're just basically relying on the landowner's opinion that it can be completely ignored, all aspects of that code. And that's, that's kind of this core problem I'm really struggling to sit around. Unless, you know, if the development was just for maintenance, for maintenance and hangars, that's different. But it obviously isn't for an FBO, but it's not for that. It's for a hotel primarily with the other things somewhat ancillary. So I'm kind of stuck at this, you know, fundamental impasse.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, building on what Mike just said, uh, and trying to wrap things up here. I see uh that in the absence of broad community support, as I said, for overriding the, the land use planning that Mike was just referring to. And in the absence of having really specific answers to questions, I think we would need the answers to in order to provide that community support. I don't see a way for us to have an action item here tonight. But if anybody else on, from either of the boards feels differently about that, please let me know. But I, I don't see, I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to provide a letter of support for something that overrides community planning. So, uh, yes. Sorry. Did you have a comment to you just?
Yeah, um, it was good. That was good.
I think, I think um, that's partly why I asked this, or start off about the lease and then how long is it going to be for their review and their RTC back? And, and you actually get, have to make the decision to sign that lease and what are you looking at? And it sounds like to me it's at least two months off before you get comments back and you get stipulations and that lease is even printing. And that's probably being ambitious, right? You know, from what I could tell. So um, I mean, I don't really, I, I can't imagine you're looking for something tonight on this. And it seems like we do have time.
So again, I can't thank you guys enough. As, as several people have mentioned, the, having the dialogue is, is crucial. And I think that that will be critical to finding a way to yes. And so we really, really appreciate your time, your willingness to answer all such a variety of questions. And um, I want to remind everybody in the room, the public comment period. So this is, there's been a separate public comment period after the first deadline. So this new deadline, there's a, uh, July thirteenth, and it has to be mail-in comments to DOT. Um, and there is an LUC meeting next Monday here at seven o'clock. And Mike, is that a legacy hand or did you have something else?
It's something else. I'm just wondering if in this meeting we can just agree to basically write a, write something, which is a summary of what our discussion just was, so we can provide that to DOT within this timeframe. So it won't be a yes, it'll be a why we're not able to say a yes.
So is that a motion?
Uh, yeah, it's a motion. It's a motion for, it's a motion for GBS to write a letter to kind of summarize what we just heard in the last ten, fifteen minutes.
I second the motion.
Okay. On this one, I think uh we should do a vote.
Is this just a vote of the GBS or the vote of the LUC and GBS? Is it a joint meeting?
We're, it's a joint meeting.
Okay. I'll take you through it. Uh, Ryan?
Yes.
Golf?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, discussion first. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking for, Mike, or can you provide a little more detail? You just want a, a summary and then you went.
Basically, yeah.
The DOT.
What I'm hearing at the, one of the core issues here is that, you know, we're, we're being asked to say yes to something that's completely outside of the municipal process. And as far as, you know, as far as the municipal process is written down, this isn't a permitted use. So we're kind of stuck in this situation where we as a, as a body within the municipality have to follow municipal code. And what the developers are asking for, because the landowner says, tells them this, is that they don't have to follow municipal code. And I don't think we can condone that or agree with it um, without at least, you know, legal analysis. Um, or hopefully some court ruling to say that DOT is correct or they're incorrect. Um, so we're at this kind of catch twenty-two situation of I don't think we can condone something that kind of ignores what we're supposed to follow. Um, and that's kind of the explanation of why we're, you know, one of the reasons we can't go any further right now. There are other issues which we can address as well, such as access. Uh, but we've already covered those really in the previous letter. I think that way we can actually respond within the, you know, within this second um comment period and sort of, you know, have at least a narrative of why we have, we have a certain, you know, a certain response, not a fully positive or a fully negative response.
Really? Thanks. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, just to respond to this current topic, I think that by a letter coming out of today's very robust meeting, we can communicate to DOT what we would like to say. And also during this comment period, all the comments we heard and suggestions from community that maybe didn't make a comment before or didn't become known to us as representatives of the communities. So um, being able to document that, put it on the record, submit it to DOT gives us a place to respond uh, because we are in this really impossible place of honoring municipal rule or not. Um, but being asked to support something. And something else I've been wanting to say is, uh, the last hangar is so fresh for all of us that have lived here. And I have no idea how that process went. I was living here, but I don't know. They, they did it and it's there. And this is.
It also ignored the, it ignored the municipal process.
And this, this team before us is willing to work with us and listen and seem to be premier people to, to do it. Uh, but getting to yes, like the whole board here has been talking about, I think, uh, writing something out of tonight's meeting would be productive.
Jennifer, I'm wondering, uh, to Mike's point about uh having a letter to summarize tonight's meeting to put forth to DOT, if that's something that could be prepared and reviewed at uh next Monday's LUC. So it could be uh stated publicly. And then I think that would give us enough time to, to get that into DOT before the uh July thirteenth deadline. It has a suggestion.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I, I'm not prepared to go yes on something. I don't know what this letter is going to say. You know, this, um, there could be nuances in there that I don't agree with. And um, I would prefer to be able to review it and, and make that decision once it's been written, we know what, what the voice is. Which is my.
So that, that would have us, that would have us writing a GBOS LUC letter that then gets approved by just LUC. Am I right about that process? Is that how we have that?
As you call a special joint meeting on next Sunday.
Well, we could do that prior. I don't, I'm a bit of a hooligan, Margaret. But sometimes we have that six to seven period, you know, or if that was a single agenda item or that was reviewed. I, I only say this because uh to Guy's point and Mike, God, you know, we're talking about, okay, let's write a letter. Let's approve that. However, we don't exactly know what is the, we know one item, Mike, is obviously, you know, code, right? And then it seems to me that that's a huge item, but really, you know, the practical thing here is the access. And uh, and I know that's been brought to DOT and that's, I'm sure, you know, uh, on their radar. But you know, we can't emphasize that enough. And so if we were, had more specifics about what would be on that letter, I'd be comfortable quoting on that tonight. But if we, if it gave us a leave to draft letter to review it, you know, I think that'd be my preference.
I'm comfortable with a, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm comfortable with a uh, the six or six thirty meeting of GBOS to review it before land use on next Monday.
Are we all comfortable with this now? Are there any other comments about Brianna?
I would just add that I, I think since we were all in the room listening and there are several points and we took notes with bullet points that stuck out like contingency or conditions that were really stand out from the neighborhood today would obviously be in there that maybe weren't top in our last letter, but were in there. Now we just have um revised concerns, I guess. Um, and then if there's, next we'll have to agree on who's writing it. But then um, if we can have a quorum before LUC, we could at least have a pretty good rough draft so that we don't have lots of extra meetings. And we can um make this meeting therefore more productive.
Okay. Any other comments about this? So I think we're at the point now, if I'm correct, where we could vote about writing this letter. And then we are agreeing that we are going to try to have a joint meeting prior to, just to review the letter at six or six thirty prior to the LUC meeting on Monday. And Margaret, yes?
Yeah. So that sounds good. I think that six or six thirty will be available in the community room.
Okay.
I can double check that, but it would surprise me if we had something that was that close.
Madam Chair, I have to interject something.
Yes.
Because it goes to the heart of what you're describing. And I have to correct the record on behalf of our company because as much as I respect Mr. Edgington's precision, he mischaracterized completely our position. And if the foundation of this letter is the characterization that we are resisting GBOS's authority to create a land use plan that we can form to, that's not accurate.
That was my assumption.
We, we, we are not saying that DOT has the ultimate say in the shape or the land use or the plan for our development on this property. We are saying GBOS should have that authority. We want to be your partner in every sense of the planning word. As Mr. Brodean and, and Larry Daniels pointed out, it is essential that we have that moving forward. We're trying to recognize and support your authority to determine land use, not DOT's. That is our position. And if your letter is stating otherwise, it's not consistent with what we've said, stated publicly.
I appreciate that clarification. I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I, I think that our uh, I, I think that that part of the letter is, is a letter to DOT.
Fair enough.
Not to you.
Fair enough.
We're speaking with you, you're speaking with us, and we appreciate that dialogue. I believe that this is, this is the letter we are writing to DOT about uh our, the, the community, concerns of the community and particularly the ways in which this process is running antithetical to the community plans.
If I could just add one thing, we sent you a letter in May promising to be at public meetings if you wanted to. We've got no response from you in terms of, do you want that schedule or a different kind of schedule? Yeah, because, because we've offered to do that, as John, as John said. You know, uh, this wasn't us lobbying for a specific assault on your part. We, we expect a conditional, if, if DOT says yes on a lease, it's going to be conditional. Um, and DOT said that they wouldn't tell us, they had to go to GBOS to do this. So we're offering virtually contract with them to come to GBOS and say, we'd like to have a set of hearings at each of these milestones. And so far, GBOS, uh, while you've heard us and you've invited us and we've been part of four meetings, that's, that's actually an important thing for us as investors to know that you would undertake that kind of process.
I can't think of a better precedent for this community to follow than that. Seriously.
To be clear on, on what you're asking for, are you asking for a commitment to scheduled meetings?
Uh, beyond that, uh, it, it really goes to the heart of jurisdiction, which we regard this community as having ultimate jurisdiction. Now, that may not be technically true, but practically it's true. There you have it. Now, if that process is public hearings, great. But if it's a different process that involves um uh presenting documentation that's progressive, uh, we're open to that. It, it's, it's, it's Larry Daniels, Mr. Ralph Brodean's, we're partners. We are not, we are here to support development, good development, sound development. We are not here to, and, and I, I will say, I've listened carefully. And there's a lot of underlying frustration with the land use controls that the Girdwood community doesn't control. There, the land, the land ownership patterns here, y'all don't control. And what we're trying to do is, is, is bring control back to our project. I don't know how more succinctly to put it than that.
Well, that's, you are, um, I think correctly identifying that you are walking into some historical precedent that has nothing to do with you.
Right.
But, but we are capable of understanding that as a community as well. You'll just have to excuse us if we're very cautious.
Deservately.
So, okay. Uh, yeah, so we are trying to wrap this up, Mike. What, what have you got?
Yeah, no, very brief. Just uh, thank, I hope you don't mind me saying John because uh, I thought, I say Mr. Faulkner, it gets confusing. Same with Mr. Treble. So uh, thanks very much for those comments, John, and uh, and the clarification. I think I was partly responding to, I was trying to be careful about how I described things, but I was partly responding to Tim's comment at the previous meeting about um, that, you know, that, I think you're, you're stuck sort of following the, following the advice in the position that uh, that DOT has taken on whether you have to go through municipal process or not. Um, so I'd recommend you probably listen back to the last meeting and uh, and just, you know, hear that, check that as well. But yeah, I appreciate the clarification. It's definitely not, as uh, as our chair just said, it's definitely not a reflection on uh, your attempts here. It's mostly a historical frustration. And as you correctly point out, a lack of, a lack of control over the land in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So briefly recapping, so we can wrap this up, guys. We've got a letter. We need to vote on that. I believe we still have not voted on that. And then I would like to, to bring the meeting to a close. So can, uh, yes?
So what I wanted to offer about the voting, if we're going to vote, is that GBOS is a representative body. So you guys would vote verbally or with, with Mike and Amanda, if she's still there.
Okay.
Um, but LUC is a one person.
That's correct.
We should proceed with those procedures.
All right. Thank you. Right. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. Are we gonna, we're voting to write it next week. We can make a vote if we want to put our name on it, right?
Except, exactly. And, and we will be, that will be a joint meeting with LUC since this was a joint meeting and we can have this board's uh, a mutual agreement. and we can have this board's mutual agreement then that it says what sums up what we all thought we heard. Okay? All right. So in this case, thank you for the clarification, Margaret. We're gonna, GBOS is gonna really vote. And by the way, I did not acknowledge Amanda. I'm sorry that Amanda Sassy joined us partway through the meeting. Okay.
All right. So I guess with LUC, LUC members qualify as anybody who's an owner representative. So in the room, those in favor of the letter for LUC, please raise your hand. This would be people in the audience too, if you're LUC member.
The motion. Can you read the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think where our motion is right now, and I have added a little bit to it, is that the GBOS is going to draft a letter to DOT to summarize the points of this meeting and to share it at a GBOS and LUC meeting next Monday.
For final approval.
For final approval.
If you're in favor of that, please raise your hand.
I have a question, if we can, since I'm voting.
Go ahead.
Just clarification. At this meeting with LUC, is that going to be then edited at LUC? Because I feel like, you know, on one hand, I agree, it would be nice to get this letter and then have this go to LUC and an opportunity for everyone to see what the final draft of that letter is. But if we're then taking to the LUC meeting to make edits to summarize something that happened here, we're sort of removing ourselves a little bit further away. So I just kind of wonder how we'll strike a good balance of that. What's the intention at LUC? Will it be heavily edited? Or are we basically going to sort of discuss why each thing and what was discussed in this meeting and move forward?
Sorry, as a reminder, I believe that the letter is just to be a summation of this meeting, of the major points of this meeting. And it will be the, it'll be at the joint session prior to the LUC meeting that the letter is discussed. The letter will not necessarily be on the agenda for LUC. It's on the, it's-
Right. Thank you. That's the clarification I was looking for. Thank you.
Thanks, Kaylee. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions before we go back to voting? All right. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, do we have a question?
I did have a question. When we're talking about municipal use, I think it's important to clarify conforming uses versus non-conforming. That was a fundamental issue brought up, reflected with the hangar versus the hotel.
And then we have, oh, we had, oh, sorry.
Okay.
And then we have those online who want to vote. I'll come back to you if you need to raise your hand to be called on. We'll do that as well. So, okay, let's go with those in the room. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Those in favor? Fifteen in favor. Anybody opposed the letter? None. Online, Kaylee, would you like to vote? You're muted if you'd like to.
Yes. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Anybody else online that'd like to vote?
Hank and I would like to vote. This is Dale Goodwin. We'll vote yes.
Thank you. Amanda, I see your hands raised. Do you want to be voting?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay. We'll come back to GBS. We haven't gone to GBS yet. So, all right. So for those in GBS, that motion passes with LUC. For those in GBS, I'll do a roll call, starting with Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
A. Guy Wade?
Yes.
And that passes with GBS 5.0. So that resolution, or that motion does pass both LUC and GBS.
Yes. And for clarification, who is going to be working on that letter?
And before we go, Camilla, I see your hands raised.
That's okay. It was just a vote.
Yeah, we got you. What's your vote?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. The question was, who's writing the letter?
I'd like to nominate Mike. And I would offer to help if others are agreeable to that. If someone else wants it, have it.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to be one of the authors.
Okay.
And should we set a deadline of Friday? So we can post it for, okay, for now, Friday.
Okay. And in light of that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes, move.
All right.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.